Good morning, everybody. If I could ask folks to please take your seats and we are going to get started this morning. So, well, welcome. We are at the Board of County Commissioners meeting. This is a workshop on March 28th. And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sax.
Here.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
All right. Okay, Commissioner Bernard, can you please lead us in the invocation and pledge? If you're able to, please rise.
Father, help us to be sensitive to what is happening to those around us. Make us aware of the concerns of others and guide us through the decision process that is before us today. Give us the strength and courage to do what is best for all those who come before us. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any additions, deletions, or substitutions to the agenda this morning?
There are not.
Mayor, I'd like to just make a clarification.
Certainly.
I believe, well, with our transition period going between our one agenda coordinator leaving, another one taking over, there was a revised agenda sent out to you on yesterday, and that's the final. The difference between the original final and the revised that you received on yesterday reflects item 3A2 being deleted and the 1:00 PM timeframe for the workshop agenda being deleted. However, the item was not. And so that's the difference between the revised agenda that you have in front of you. That will not occur again. We'll go back to where we originally, once you get an agenda final, that is what you will receive and we'll show everything else as an add and delete.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? We have a motion by Commissioner Baxter, a second by the Vice Mayor, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. And also let the record show that we have been joined by our colleague, Commissioner Woodward. All right. Going on to our regular agenda, item 3A1. This is a motion to receive and file, warrant list. And we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Baxter, a second by Commissioner Moreno, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. All right. As we're getting ready to get... Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
I'm not sure where on the agenda we need to do this, but since we're still in the regular agenda, I... and Verdina, maybe you can guide me. I actually need to make a request for an off-site proclamation.
Okay. Well, she wants to make a request for an off-site proclamation.
When do I need to do that?
Okay, that's fine.
Now, okay.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Woodward, I mean by Commissioner Moreno, for an off-site proclamation.
Second.
And this is for...
I'd like to request a board approval for an off-site proclamation declaring April 2nd through 8th, 2023, as Palm Beach County Sports Commission Hall of Week, Hall of Fame Week.
Okay. Very good. That's a great... I mean, talking about sports, we'll get there in a minute, but... All right. And Commissioner Baxter, seconds. All in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. All right. Anything else? Okay. Now, just to advise everybody, in this, we're doing something different today. It's a pilot. And that is, we, with our workshop today, we don't have a time certain for our second item. So we are starting at 9:30 this morning. We'll have our first item, the agricultural reserve tier and general conservation easements, and staff will be making presentation. We will allow public comment. And then, as soon as we finish with that item and the board is ready to move on, we will have our second item that has to do with the Brookside property overview, and that'll be a presentation by FDO. Also, to let folks know, I know some of my colleagues have lunch plans that they have made, and so we are going to try and allow folks to have a lunch break. Well, we will definitely have a lunch break, but the plan is to have the lunch break happen sometime between 11:30 and noon and then come back at about 1:15, so that folks can keep their commitments. All right. With that, I think, I don't, is there any, I don't see anything else, and nothing from the board, so we'll move on and we will turn it over to staff for our presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Yes, you have a three-pronged item for discussion this morning, following up on your direction from December. First part being overview of the ag reserve tier. Second part, we wanted to pair that with a discussion on conservation easements and lands that we have in conservation, where the county has a ownership interest in those, and wanted to put those pieces together as we work into the final part, a discussion on the Brookside property, which, again, began that discussion with you in December, and we will be here to take your direction as it relates to that. In December, just an update from activities since that point, we have conducted two public informational meetings with interested parties following your direction, held one at Vista Center, then actually held one down in West Boynton as well. The attendance was probably about 20 or so persons at each meeting, so followed through on that point. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kevin Fisher to begin the presentation on the overview of the ag reserve tier.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So what I'm going to do for the first part of the presentation is just kind of provide a general overview of the agricultural reserve tier. I know there have been many items in recent months and years before you with respect to this portion of the county, but I think it's helpful to just go back in time a little bit and learn some of the history of this unique part of Palm Beach County. So again, the county has a managed growth tier system that we discussed in length at the January board workshop, but again, there are five tiers to the county. There's the urban suburban tier, the ex-urban, the rural, the glades, and the one we'll be focused on today is the agricultural reserve tier. Some of the main objectives of the tier are to encourage agricultural uses in this area of the county, to promote sustainable development forms. There are limited development options, and we'll go through some of those in future slides, as well as requiring the preservation of open space. So jumping back a few decades, so prior to the, what we consider the modern comprehensive plan, which obviously has been amended many times, but that's what we refer to as the 1989 comprehensive plan. Prior to that, the 1980 comprehensive plan did not yet have the managed growth tier system, which was what I just covered, those five different areas of the county. And the agricultural reserve that we know today was an area that was referred to as the reserve, and it also had one other area there located west of West Boca, and then also the property that's known as the wedge, which is now in Broward County. It did call for the preservation of agriculture within this location and did identify limited development options, the first being one unit per five acres. The second was the 80/20 PUD. That still is a development option. However, subsequent to this, the 60/40 was introduced, and essentially, most of the residential development we've seen in the tier has utilized the 60/40 option, which again is 60% preserve and 40% preservation. And again, TDRs, or the transfer of development rights, are sent outside of the tier, as this is not a receiving area but a sending area to the urban suburban tier. So in the 90s, there was a lot of work done with staff and consultants and the Board of County Commissioners at that time to set out goals and objectives for this area. And again, the goal was to preserve and enhance agricultural activity and environmental and water resources in the agricultural reserve and produce a master development plan compatible with these goals. So even at that time, it was always known and recognized that there would be a level of development within this area of the county. However, a focus was put on preservation and then those development options, that as development occurred, lands were set aside in preservation. So there was a Phase 1 and Phase 2 report. Phase 1 report was finalized and received by the Board of County Commissioners in 1998, and there were three scenarios that were contemplated as part of that analysis, a status quo, a no bond, or a bond referendum, which is what was selected. And again, that was a $150 million bond countywide, $100 million of which was spent on land for preservation within the agricultural reserve tier. Again, the purpose of the bond was to preserve agricultural and environmental lands, to manage infrastructure costs and service delivery in the area, as well as the goal of reducing the number of units from approximately 20,000 to 14,000, because the lands that were purchased through the bond had their development rights extinguished. So again, the objectives and some of the policy directives of this area of the county was to enhance agriculture and preservation, the limiting of residential to one dwelling unit per acre maximum with no density bonus programs available with those 60 or 80, 60/40 or 80/20 PUDs. So again, the way that works is the development is clustered onto the development area. So while it says one unit per acre maximum, if it's a 60/40, that is over the whole property of the land in preservation as well as the development area, which leads to a net density of about 2.5 units per acre on the development area. Also, limited non-residential, as you know, there's a commercial cap. I believe right now it is 1,015,000 square feet is what the cap for commercial uses in the tier is today. And again, the bond did go to, the referendum did go to the voters, which was approved. Again, it was to create a self-sustaining form of development with the development supposed to be tier-serving as opposed to regional draws. And again, the costs and to minimize impacts from the development and limit development to manage traffic and service impacts. And then Phase 2 was finalized in 1999, and a lot of what came out of this phase is what led to the comprehensive plan amendments that happened, I believe, around 2000. So a lot of the major components of this master planning effort were then rolled into and became a policy basis for this tier within the comprehensive plan. So just to recap, again, the bond scenario is what was selected. That was approved by the voters, went to referendum, and it was $150 million in total, $100 million of which was spent for land acquisition in the agricultural reserve. Okay. Phase 2 involved a lot of public outreach. There was extensive research, data analysis as part of this master planning effort. The consultant, many of the recommendations made by the consultant, again, were incorporated into policy in the comprehensive plan. Not all of them, but many of those recommendations were. And as you can see, the, it's a little hard to tell the differences, but they're very similar. So what the map that had been developed and then at the conclusion of Phase 2 identified, you can see the two main commercial nodes where we have Delray Marketplace and Canyon Center. And if we look at the map from today, you can see the development pattern has pretty much stuck pretty close to what was envisioned. The commercial nodes developed as were planned. A lot of the areas that, in green, where you see on the left, were envisioned to be in preservation or agriculture, today are, and a lot of where we see the development areas for those PUDs do align with what was envisioned as part of that master planning And then, subsequent to those in the 2000s, you know, this has been a living, breathing document per se, and policies within the comprehensive plan have been amended over time. So there has been additional review and updates of recommendations, all of which have gone to the board for direction and ultimate adoption of what we see in our comprehensive plan today and the rules by which we abide by today. And those comprehensive plan policies were adopted in 2001, so just a couple of years after the conclusion of the master planning effort. And then there have been a number of additional amendments in the comprehensive plan since then. Some have been fairly recent. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie Gregory.
Good morning. So this section reflects changes adopted by the board that were not anticipated by the master plan and were not included in the subsequent implementing policies in the comprehensive plan. So the first change occurred in 2004 due to a development scenario for Apollonia Farms, which requested to utilize South Florida Water Management District lands to serve as preserve requirement for the 1,500-acre PUD. The utilization of these lands for preserves was not contemplated at the master plan, and actually, the lands were intentionally excluded from the calculation of potential units that could be built in the tier. In 2005, the site now containing the Baptist Health Bethesda West Hospital at the northeast corner of Boynton Beach Boulevard and State Road 7 received a land use amendment to allow the facility and some associated medical office. This large-scale institutional use was also not contemplated as non-residential uses were intended to serve the tier only and the residence. In 2006, the county sold some properties bought with bond money, and that's some discussion that will occur later today in more detail. And also around this time, some of the PUDs also brought in some additional South Florida Water Management District lands as preserve. And then, beginning in around 2008, a number of the AGR/PUD-approved projects were turned with zoning applications to configure the site plan, including adding and replacing preserve areas with other areas within the tier, which we now refer to as swapping. And so this is a practice that frequently happens today and helps to maintain the 60/40 requirement for these projects. In the most recent decade, we saw a lot of more requests for a comp plan text changes to address specific development issues. In 2012, high-value added agricultural uses such as packing plants were allowed within preserve areas, and that was subject to specific location criteria. In 2014, the first revision to the boundary of the tier since the adoption in 2001 was modified for the Thomas Packing Plant Site, and that's at Clintmore and State Road 7. The site was removed from the tier and into the urban suburban tier in order to develop a multiple-use project. Also, in 2014, project owners and farmers began seeking additional ways to expand development options in the tier. Due to the number of large requests, we had a workshop with the board, which ultimately led to a series of roundtable discussions in 2015, where community groups and property owners were encouraged to formally outline any recommendations that they had. The board then considered and adopted amendments to allow smaller, isolated parcels to become eligible for preserve areas. And then, and that was because previously, preserve areas less than 150 acres were required to be located contiguous to other areas also totaling 150 acres. The board also adopted land use changes for several sites with commercial and institutional uses that pre-existed the master plan to allow for these sites to be conforming, and changes for farm residences were adopted, which allowed an agricultural property with an existing residence to utilize the non-residential portion of the parcel as a preserve area, which then allowed for the sale of these development rights. And finally, the board adopted changes to increase the commercial cap and exempt the preserve requirement for sites less than 16 acres in order to allow for additional opportunities for smaller neighborhood-serving commercial sites. More recently, changes include allowing landscape services in preserve areas subject to specific use percentages, allowing limited Lakewood drainage district canals to be utilized as preserves, and allowing that land to serve for density purposes. And then finally, and most recently, the board adopted two new future land use designations of commerce and essential housing, which were the result of our Fall 2021 workshop. So now, looking at the data on how all of these ag reserve policies have been implemented over the last 22 years, you can see here from the snapshot, which was repaired by Lisa Amer, our zoning director, that one-third of the acreage within the tier is approved for residential or non-residential uses, with the bulk of these being the 60/40 PUDs. This data also shows that 60% of the total acreage of the tier is in preservation, of which 28% is utilized for conservation or natural purposes, and 29% as agriculture. And so this is in comparison to the 2021 snapshot data, which we showed at the last workshop, and that change is that the residential and non-residential approval percentages increased by 3%, and the land preserve also increased 2%, and that's the change from 2021 to now. After accounting for the pending future land use and zoning applications in process, this leaves 3% or 582 acres as other remaining, whereas in 2021, the other remaining lands consisted of 8% or 1,779 acres.
Right. And now with that overview, now we're going to do a deeper dive into preserves and the different types of preserves that we see. Before I go through all of these, I'm actually going to jump ahead one slide to Deb Drum, our Director of Environmental Resources Management, and she's going to give a, not just specific to the agricultural reserve, but a overview of conservation efforts from the department.
Good morning. I've been asked to share a few slides just to give a common framework for how and why we protect natural preserves in Palm Beach County. Just to give a bit of an overview, ERM, the Department of Environmental Resources Management, was established on October 1st, 1987. So we're coming up on our 36th birthday, and we're very excited about that, because we were created in this county. If you look at Florida, it's pretty remarkable that this county was such a leader in environmental restoration to create a department that was focused on establishing, maintaining, and implementing programs for the protection, preservation, and enhancement of land and water resources in the county. And that was pretty proactive and progressive for that period of time. We did do, we've often had trouble explaining the value of environmental resources as something essential, as opposed to something that's just nice to have. And so we did invest in 2017 in an economic evaluation of ecosystem services in our county to get a better idea of putting some numbers around what the real value is of these in our county. And as a result of habitat restoration efforts by ERM, the ecological benefits provided by the Palm Beach County Natural Areas Program have increased over time. This is an excerpt from the plan. Native biodiversity on these lands has improved. We have several rare species have returned to the areas, and their populations have increased. And there's a range of ecosystem services that are provided to the residents of Palm Beach County by the existence of these, not the least of which is recreational activities, educational and cultural services, and very importantly, hydrologic services, groundwater recharge, water purification, and flood mitigation, which is becoming a very large topic as we tackle resilience in our community. Erosion control and soil regeneration, provision of open space, cycling of nutrients, and the ever-important pollinators providing those opportunities. This is a map of our natural areas in the county separated by north and south county, north county's on the left, south county's on the right. And Palm Beach County has invested approximately $500 million to acquire, restore, and create public use facilities, and we maintain approximately 32,000 acres for long-term preservation and conservation. The county is the sole owner of just 30,000, of just under 30,400 acres of those natural area lands, and we co-own about 38 acres. And we also manage just under 1,200 acres of natural areas' lands owned by others. Typically, those are scenarios where we have fringe properties next to our properties, where it's important for us to control seed sources that are adjacent to our natural So we've identified six primary mechanisms to protect Palm Beach County natural areas, and our goal is to have as many overlapping protections as possible to ensure that the original intent for preservation and conservation is supported over the long term, meaning that you put all of those layers of protection that makes it very difficult to untangle them. The majority of our natural areas have conservation easements, about 24,700 of those acres. There's also grant restrictions, or in other words, a grant restriction is basically a funding source that we reuse to acquire the property, restricts the use for anything other than conservation or passive outdoor recreation. There are permit restrictions. For example, lands permitted for mitigation, and they have that specific permitted use. A deed restriction, which states that the land must be used for conservation, mitigation, or recreation. Misland use easements, et cetera, things that you might have a prescription for a dedicated use that prohibits development, or co-ownership, where we have multiple owners with the shared intent of preservation. This is a map of the private, we have a map of private preserves resulting from development approval or other regulatory actions. So this is a different category than what I was just speaking about, about acquired natural area lands in the county. These properties are owned and managed by others, but there is a map on our website that shows the private preserves in the county. That upper, that teeny-tiny map that you can't read in the upper left-hand corner, that just shows you, that's what the, there is online, a countywide map showing those preserves. And then the bottom-left map shows me zooming into a smaller area of the map. Site 43 is the little blue dot at the very bottom of that map, and that's the Stonehaven Development. And then I've zoomed in on the right to show you, as you keep zooming in, what that perspective looks like. And so the example, there are two preserves in the Stonehaven Development that showed in red, outlined in red on that larger view. And that just gives you an idea of how you can zoom in on our website. You can, anyone can get on our website at any time, and under My GeoNav, and there is a drop-down menu for all other layers, and there is a privately-owned preserve layer. Looks like the logo for the drop-down looks like a stack of pancakes, and you can, anyone can pull this up, and you can see who owns it and who's responsible for it. Private preserves are created through Article 14(c) to preserve and protect natural resource on sites in the unincorporated areas that are being developed. These properties are owned and managed by private entities, by, for example, HOAs or commercial property owners, and in some cases governmental entities. This map, again, it shows the locations of each private preserve that resulted from a development approval or other regulatory action. There's just over 100 of these private preserves in our county. And I'll just wrap up by describing what are the mechanisms that protect the Palm Beach County private preserves, that just, there are over 100 that are on that map. And these are conservation easements, plat dedications, resolutions, or development orders, site plan dedications, deed restrictions, or declaration of restrictive covenants, and surveys. And so these are the various ways. Earlier preserves were dedicated by various combinations of conservation easements, plats, resolutions, all of those things. Today, they're all primarily dedicated by conservation easement. Some of the earlier preserves, you might have seen a more of a combination of all of the ones listed. All private preserves are regulated by an approved preserve management plan, or a PMP, to ensure long-term protection and preservation, and collectively, they protect more than 1,600 acres of land throughout unincorporated Palm Beach County, and some have been annexed into municipalities. That's all I have.
All right. So I'm going to turn it over in a moment to Jeff Gagnon, who will go a little bit more into the specifics of what we call the development PDD preserves, which are the focus of what are most of the items before the board when we have a 60/40 PUD, those preserves. But I did just want to briefly run through kind of the three major buckets of preservation lands that we see within the agricultural reserve tier. The first being governmental entities that own properties. There's a number of properties within the tier that are owned by the federal government, as well as the state of Florida, and some lands under the South Florida Water Management District ownership. And then we have the conservation, future land use designation. The development PDD preserves, again, I will have Jeff cover those next few slides, but essentially, those are privately owned. The land has a conservation easement placed over the land. Most of those are associated with 60/40 PUDs, the traditional marketplace developments, or TMDs, and the MUPDs. or TMDs, and the MUPDs. Again, these are restricted by a conservation easement to limit what agricultural and environmentally-focused use can be on the property. And as you have seen, there have been a number of swaps, so those preserves can be swapped for other lands. And then the last is the Bond Purchased Lands. Again, this, it was an outcome from the referendum that the voters did pass. About $100 million was spent in the Agricultural Reserve tier, and nearly 2,500 acres of land were purchased. There are 12 active leases today, and there were two main goals of this. One is to preserve that land, and also to have a net reduction in units, because the Comprehensive Plan extinguishes development rights associated with those lands that were purchased through the bond. And with that, I will turn it over to Jeff for the next few slides.
Thank you, Kevin. Good morning, Jeff Gagnon, Deputy Planning Director. I'd like to go through some additional information on planned developments in the Ag Reserve. We have an animated slide before you. This is a hypothetical site of 250 acres. It would have existing development rights for 250 units, and what the 60-40 PUD accomplishes is to maintain the same number of units on the site, however, they're concentrated on only 40% of the development area. So what this does, it allows opportunity for that additional 60% to be utilized for preserve area. And in a few moments, I'll talk about some of the existing uses that can exist within that designated preserve. And there's the animation arrow in case you were confused as far as the density, where it was coming and going to. So to date through 2023, of 13,233 total acres, approximately 5,000 have been developed, and approximately 8,000 have been dedicated as preserve. Almost 12,000 dwelling units have been approved, and just over 10,000 have been built to date. As far as the ownership of the preserve area, a majority of that has been preserved in a private holding, so almost 5,000 acres are private, and governmental entities control just over 3,000. So this goes to the talking point as far as what uses are allowed within those preserve areas. They're primarily consistent between the PUDs, which are residential-only development, and the TMDs or MUPDs, which allow for uses in addition to residential. I think the most important aspect to note are the items highlighted in yellow on the bottom of both columns. Those came about due to amendments associated with the Essential Housing Future Land Use Designation, as well as the Commerce Future Land Use Designation. And what that did is really provided additional opportunities for developers to come up with some unique design options associated with water management within those two areas if they have those future land use designations within the agricultural preserve areas. So with that, I'll pass the microphone back to Kevin.
Okay. So on the screen now, on the right, you can see a map that shows the location of the 12 sites that I referenced earlier that are under active leases. This map also does show, and the next few slides I'll get into, are three properties that were purchased by bond funds that are now under different ownership. One is governmentally still owned, and then two are in private ownership. As you can see, the bond-purchased properties are scattered throughout the tier. To note, because part of the conversation subsequent to this presentation will be more specific to the Brookside property, that is the, on the map, the southernmost rectangular piece in blue there. All right. So the first of those three sites that I wanted to discuss is the SWA, or the Solid Waste Authority, site. This property was purchased in 2000 with bond funds. It was a total of 908 acres for nearly $38.5 million. In 2005, the Future Land Use Designation was modified from agricultural to UT, or Transportation and Utilities, on about 41 of those acres, not the entirety of the site that was purchased, but 41 of those acres. In 2007, those roughly 41 acres were sold for $5.11 million. Those funds were returned to the bond fund, and this site now has the SWA transfer station on it. Now, the next two are properties that are in private ownership. So these are the only two instances where we have bond-purchased lands that have been sold to private landowners. The first is the McMurray and Piero Farms site. This was purchased in 2000 for approximately $23.5 million, for a total of 624 acres. In 2002, there was, there was some shared ownership with the South Florida Water Management District and the county on this property, as you'll see at the bottom. In 2017, county acquired full ownership of the site. In 2006, there was a request for proposals issued for sale of the property. Again, not the entire property, but 53 acres. And those 53 acres were sold for $1.06 million. A conservation easement was recorded on the site. And it's important to note that uses are limited to preserve area, and the development rights of the site were extinguished per the Comprehensive Plan. And the second of such sites under private ownership today is Brookside, located there north of the Delray Marketplace. This property was purchased in 2003 with bond funds. The site, 75 acres, was purchased for a little more than $5 million. Similar to the last site in 2006, there was a request for proposal for sale of the site. Again, so the property was sold for $3.2 million. Again, a conservation easement was recorded on the site, again, limiting it to preserve area and development rights extinguished on the property per the Comprehensive Plan. This property has had a fair number of requests over the years. As you can see, in 2007, there was a proposed request for a farmer's market, 2010 for institutional and public facilities. A pre-application meeting was held in 2014 for a Future Land Use Amendment to Commercial Low. And then, as we'll be discussing later today, the current proposal for multifamily housing that would allow for up to 450 market-rate units, as well as 150 workforce housing units. Right, so that concludes our kind of brief run-through of the history of the tier, as well as some of the types of preserves and bond lands that we have. So, you know, before we turn it over for board discussion, just wanted to highlight some of the emerging issues and recent trends that we've seen. With the increased population in the tier, there has been some demand for additional commercial uses within the tier. The Comprehensive Plan currently limits commercial uses in the tier to those two main areas at Lyons Road and Atlantic and Boynton Beach Boulevards, again, Delray Marketplace and Canyon's Town Center. There are eight pre-existing commercial sites that were in place prior to the master-planning effort, so those are included as allowable sites for commercial. And then other properties within a quarter-mile of the intersection of Lyons and Boynton and Atlantic. So near those intersections, there are some newer commercial centers that have been developed in recent years. There has been demand for some additional housing types. As was covered earlier, the Essential Housing is a new Future Land Use Designation, specific to the Agricultural Reserve tier, and that does have a workforce housing requirement with it. Previous development, we hadn't had the development of any workforce housing units in the tier. Growth obviously leads to some infrastructure and service needs. If you look at our long-range road programs, there are plenty of roadway projects that will be coming hopefully sooner rather than later on some of our major corridors in the tier. And then essentially, one of the biggest challenges is the balancing of our environmental, farming, equestrian needs with the applications for different types of developments that we've been seeing in the tier. So with that, that concludes our presentation, so.
Thank you very much. Before we open up to the board for questions, I need to make a point of personal privilege. I see in our audience today, we have two former county commissioners, Carol Roberts and Karen Marcus. Well, thank you for joining us this morning and being here, back in your old stomping grounds. All right. I bring this back to the board. Would the board like to have questions for staff? Commissioner Baxter, are you recognized?
Good morning, everyone. So, a few questions. It did stick out to me that one of the main objectives to the Ag Reserve was to limit development for traffic reasons. And I did notice, most of the percentage seemed to go towards residential properties of that development. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, the location criteria for commercial is pretty limited in the tier, so there aren't many areas. We do now have the Commerce Future Land Use Designation, light industrial, but specific to commercial uses, it is pretty limited. So yes, most of the development that we've seen has been in the form of the 60-40 residential planned unit developments.
And a lot of the, once you have a bunch of residential units and homes in an area, I think it's pretty common sense that we would expect some businesses and services to support those. So we've allowed so much, and we've been getting a lot of heat lately about allowing commerce uses, but I feel we've done a lot, the majority of, that has been built, 27% I believe it was, of what was in like 3% for commercial purposes, 27 for residential, of certain allowed buildable units. And it just, it stuck out to me that I think we do need to actually focus on a lot of the commerce uses, and that just seems to make sense. Is there something I'm missing? It was actually planned to have mixed uses. Is that what you covered? Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, so the master plan did envision the, kind of the mixed-use centers being central to the Agricultural Reserve tier, so that's why Lyons and Atlantic, and Lyons and Boynton were the focus of the commercial hubs within the Agricultural Reserve. Like you said, the commerce, which is again, light industrial uses in nature, that does have broader location criterias where those can be located on the major arterials.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that and make sure I wasn't misunderstanding, so thank you.
Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. I guess my question would probably be for ERM, and this one, on page 26 of the PowerPoint, you show the natural areas map, and very little of it is in South County that I can see. Is any of it actually in the Ag Reserve? Any of those?
We have a few acres, well, I don't say a few. We have some acreage in the Ag Reserve that are in our natural areas inventory. You know, when we were doing acquisition of lands for preservation, there were just fewer opportunities in South County. Most of that had been developed, that's where our older, more developed community is. And so we do have some, East Conservation Area is the area that we have in the Ag Reserve, that's part of our natural areas inventory.
Okay. So of the, of the land that we have put into preserve in the Ag Reserve, have you guys been able to do any type of assessment to know whether that should be put into, you know, this category as far as like a natural area? Or have you been able to do that? Is that even an option?
So the lands that are preserved in the Ag Preserve, they're Ag preserves. So that's a little bit of a different animal than, say, the natural areas that tend to be a little bit larger or exceptional ecological value. Some of the scrub sites, the Delray Oaks site that we took you to, that's an example of some of those exceptional areas that we had had opportunities in the more developed areas of the county to actually get ownership. These, these were all preserved as part of Ag preserves, and so that's, it falls into that category of private preserves, which is something that is really not in the wheelhouse so much of what we do at ERM. So we're managing larger tracts of natural areas through prescribed fire and intensive exotic control. These are privately maintained.
Okay. And so you wouldn't even want to acquire them, or, I mean, I guess my question is, is any of this preserve that's in the Ag Reserve, would it be something that we should, or is it not exceptional as far as a natural area, as far as you know?
There are some nice areas. They, it would take an exceptional amount of staffing and funding that I would have to bring back to the board to let you know what it would take for us to take that on.
Okay, thank you. And one more question. On page 21, where we have the snapshot, if I'm reading all of this correctly, I know this is from 2021, but it's probably not too far off from now, we're looking at remaining lands that 8%, 1,700 approximate acres, that's the land that's left either not developed or not claimed, otherwise not, like, it has its development rights, those 1,700 acres?
Correct. And yes, we actually updated the slide for this presentation.
Oh.
It's on the screen here. So that went from 8% down to 3% when you account for the pending applications that are in process right now, zoning and planning.
All right, sorry, I didn't have the new numbers. So we're down to 580 acres, correct, left?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. I have a couple of questions. This one's for ERM. So when they, when the lands, preserve areas, or the lands that we were, you were managing get annexed into a city, does the county still then maintain the maintenance on that, or do the cities then become the maintainers of those properties?
It's a site-specific consideration depending on agreements and whatever the situation is. In some ways, sometimes it makes sense for us to maintain management, because we're trying to protect an adjacent area that's maybe part of a larger natural area. And sometimes it just depends on what the municipality wants to do, or what they have the funding to do. So, but in most cases, that's a very small part of our acreage.
Okay.
That intersects in that category that you're talking about.
And then, and maybe it's included, but Water Utilities has also a lot of land that's, I would call it, I mean, it's pristine, and where does that show up? Is that in other, is that in that other category when you talk about, or is it not considered preservation?
That is not considered, I think for all the numbers that you've seen today, I don't believe that like Green Kay or those kind of areas are included, because those are considered water treatment facilities, or water utilities.
But they're, I mean, they are some of the most amazing properties and are preserved in ways, or, I shouldn't say preserved, they're maintained in ways that are really beneficial.
Absolutely. It's an additive benefit, absolutely, to our county and the way that they're managed. They're beautiful wetlands, they're functional wetlands, and they are, because they are, I don't want to speak too much for Ali Bayet, our Utilities Director, but I will say that, you know, they're permitted as such. They're permitted as wastewater treatment facilities, which has a different, discreet type of regulations and rules that govern them.
But from a practical perspective, as, as they are, I mean, as they're used, I mean, they're-
They're a beautiful community amenity that is also functionally and environmentally, there's no doubt.
Okay, good, good. All right. And then the last thing I'll leave you with is on, do we have any preservation lands on any of the barrier islands and?
We have preservation lands that are islands, that are part, you know, like Snook Islands and other areas in the Lake Worthland proper. So I will say, yes. And, but on town of Palm Beach, our major barrier island, those are, they're owned by them and managed by them.
Okay, okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. There was, I guess I'm concerned that somebody had said a lot of our preserve lands, somebody's been dumping stuff on it. So who would, I guess, watch that regulated? And how do we make sure that it is staying actually true and nice for the animals and the ecosystem to thrive there?
So we, we have a very, we have one of the best programs in the state of Florida, if not the best, and probably in the southeastern United States, with our Wild Lands Task Force, which are officers who are trained and dedicated to maintaining enforcement of our ordinance, of your ordinances, on our natural areas. And that is something that we knew that we needed to put in place a number of years ago, again, a very proactive- needed to put in place a number of years ago. Again, a very proactive approach on that, and protects all 32,000 acres and goes around to make sure that they're being maintained properly. We have a 616 Bird line, so if you dial 616-BIRD, anybody that observes something wrong, if like see something, say something on one of our natural areas, can call that number 24/7, and we'll get a response and get somebody to go check out what's going on. So that's how.
But is that just our property, or is that also personally owned preserves?
It's not the private preserves. It's our properties. However, we often, because they're law enforcement, they're in court, they're in contact and coordinated with law enforcement entities, all different agencies, all different levels of government. So they have those connections. And so when calls get, we often get, receive calls that maybe not be in our jurisdiction, that aren't in our jurisdiction, but they often get referenced or get referred.
And if it's fined, are they just, if they find who is doing it, are they just given fines, or are there actually corrective actions taken?
It depends on the law that's being broken, and they could get arrested. And if it's a federal law that's being broken, or a county ordinance, they can get ticketed, or yes, they go through that judicial process.
The reason I ask it was brought to my attention that due to some of the dumping, I guess, thrip is a problem right now?
I'm sorry, what?
I didn't know what it was. Apparently, it's kind of like a parasite that eats through the vegetation in our agricultural areas. And it's killing a lot of the farmland. And that, I guess they're saying the cause of that happened to come from people dumping things on the land next to agriculturally farmed areas.
Illegal dumping is a big problem in any county, and ours is included.
And so where we have our solid, I guess it wouldn't even be the solid waste, it would be just grounds where they can drop vegetation. Are we making sure that the vegetation is also not contaminating our agricultural lands?
That is not something that I oversee. I don't know if anybody else, or if that's a solid waste issue, or anybody else can speak to that. I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay, I mean, maybe we can have a meeting afterwards.
Excuse me, Ron Rice would like to comment on that.
Okay, please.
Yeah, if you don't mind, thank you. So I heard the word thrips. So, yes, we have a thrips infestation in the Ag Reserve as of about October of last year. Thrips parvus binus, first discovered in 2020 in Orange County, then it kind of went away, but then it showed up here in Palm Beach County in force. There has been some discussion whether or not ornamental debris from other parts of the county that gets taken to the Solid Waste Authority is a source of that thrips infestation. I actually called Dan Pellwitz, and I said, "The rumor is that, you know, materials that are coming from Palm Beach Island, which are known to have that, this is same exact thrips parvus binus species on it, on ornamentals." So these are prunings that are being removed, that these were the source of thrips in the Ag Reserve. And he said, "There is no material from Palm Beach Island that goes to the Solid Waste Authority in that Delray Beach Ag Reserve area." So perhaps it's coming from other parts of Palm Beach County, the thrips being brought in on ornamental clippings. We're not sure. But I would say that Dan very graciously agreed that he would allow our University of Florida USDA and FDAC's researchers, entomologists, to go into that Solid Waste Authority with his environmental team. They can look at whatever they want to, discover what they want to, report on what they want to. So he's totally cooperative with this. And so that just happened, that conversation was about 10 days ago.
Okay, all right. I don't see any other lights lit. I guess we're going to move on to, oh, Commissioner Woodward.
Sorry, one last question. Coming into this, I learned a lot. You guys took me on a tour of the Ag Reserve, and it's in Commissioner Sacks' district. I was under the assumption that most of the food that's grown in this county was, comes from the Ag Reserve. I've now learned that that's not exactly true. Can you give us numbers on far as like food growth in the county versus what's actually grown in the Ag Reserve? Do you happen to have those numbers? I asked for them a few months ago. I'm not sure what it is, but does, oh, Ryan again, hi.
Mr. Rice, can you help us out again?
I'll do my best. So the Ag Reserve is, in terms of agriculture, is quite special in the kinds of crops that's growing. These are going to be a wide range of, let's say, Chinese vegetables, eggplants, bell pepper is really huge. Whereas if you're comparing that to the Everglades Ag Area, it's really a different crop profile completely for a number of different reasons. To what extent that volume of crops produced in the Ag Reserve stays here within Palm Beach County, I don't know. These crops go to the packing houses, and some of these landowners or the ag operations have packing houses in other parts of the state, let's say St. Lucie or Martin County. And so the crops end up going all over the place. I'll say for the Everglades Ag Area, just taking the leafy vegetable production, for instance, I mean, that's flowing all the way up to Canada during the winter season. So a big fraction of our crops leave the county, feeding the rest of the eastern seaboard during the winter. Does that answer your question, marginally?
Sorry. I was more curious as far as like what's actually grown in this tier, this Ag Reserve tier, versus the Everglades, which is the much bigger farm area. I know it's more of a specialized crop. And I know, I think we have, is it one or more packing houses there? And like what specifically has grown there? Because coming into this, I kind of thought Ag Reserve was all agriculture, and it's more specialized than that. If you could just talk about this tier, if you can?
Okay, yes, for the Ag Reserve, then, they would specialize in certain row crops, which would include eggplant, okra, bell pepper, sweet peppers of all varieties, lots of herbs, all right, and Chinese vegetables are very popular. Those are mostly the vegetable crops in terms of Ag Reserve. And then, of course, we have some florists and some plant nurseries there as well. Okay.
Commissioner Sacks?
I forgot tomatoes, apologize.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Sacks, and then we'll have Commissioner Baxter.
Yes, we do have tomatoes. The, and strawberries. And to answer, and thank you so much for those good questions by our two new commissioners, because this is a workshop, and this is how we learn. Some of the crops in the Ag Reserve, we have to think that it's not just, what does agriculture mean in the Ag Reserve, is not just tomatoes and cucumbers and lots of, lots and lots of peppers. It's also plant nurseries. We have a lot of nurseries, especially along Lyons Road. You'll see a lot of plant nurseries there. And we also have equestrian. We forget sometimes that agriculture, as defined for the uses of what we see here in the county, also includes multimillion-dollar industry for equestrian, which is interesting. So as well as with agriculture, when it comes to fruits and vegetables, and I'm sure we will hear from some members of the public who have farms, that have these specialized fruits, I don't even know, I don't use them, but millennials do. They have specialized fruits that are just amazing and are grown only right here in this area. So it is a multifaceted area that is very rich because of its soil. And I think that's the very beginning of this discussion, is that the Glades area has a soil that is primed for sweet, you know, for sweet corn and of course, sugar. But the Ag Reserve has a very specialized type of soil that, as we joke about, and I've lived in it for many years, you put a stick in the ground here, Commissioner, and you're going to get something, probably a weed if it's at my house. But with the farmers, you get some beautiful fruits and vegetables. So it is, it's very, very rich. And it all starts with the soil. So thank you for those questions. They're very, very educational.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a follow-up question for Mr. Rice.
We're glad you're here with us today.
Got to be here.
What have the recent trends, if you know, for the crops in the Ag Reserve been? They seem to be expanding? Do they seem to be getting more? How's the soil been? How are, what does that overall look like in the Ag Reserve currently?
I don't sense an expansion, certainly not acreage. I do sense a more sophisticated approach to cropping, in terms of multi-cropping, being more sophisticated with irrigation, and reducing costs in terms of moving water with pumping, that sort of thing, in terms of ag operations.
Thank you.
There's probably a bit more, you know, being a little more aggressive on the kinds of crops being grown, chasing markets, and sometimes being run away from markets that are flooded by Mexico. So there's a specialization in that sense, too.
Okay, thank you. And on Commissioner Sacks' point with us having wonderful nurseries out there, I just, I kind of want to, if it's okay with you, Mayor, just have a point of personal privilege and remind people that we currently, and I said this at our last meeting, have 400 less nurseries because there is a requirement of an accessory business to keep them alive and around. And that's over the past few years. So just keep that in mind when we start discussing, you know, problems with big trucks and landscapers, that they also are the nursery industry as well. So thank you.
And I think it's important to point out that we did, and I think in the presentation, a couple of years ago, as we were working on the landscape and nursery situation, that we specifically allowed landscape operations into the Ag Reserve and made them, gave them a legal status out there where they had been illegal before. And so I think it's kudos to the previous boards to do that. All right, so we're moving on to public comment, I think, now. And here's, we've got, we've got a number of cards. We do want to hear from folks there. And I know Vice Mayor had spoken to a few groups that had asked about potentially speaking as a group and receiving 10 minutes as opposed to individual cards. Now, the challenge we have is apparently everybody turned in cards. And so I think it's not, it's not going to be practical today for us to do that. I don't know how Commissioner Bernard would manage that, since he's got a bunch of cards in front of him. So unfortunately, I mean, we would have, it probably been a little more expeditious for everybody involved, but at this point in time, because of how this went down, I think we're going to have to move on with just the three minutes. And then, if possible, maybe the next time we have a workshop like this and we want to have some flexibility, we can figure out a way to get that done. But I can't see how Commissioner Bernard could manage it with all these cards in front of him.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just want to know, how do we want to proceed? We have some folks who want to speak on item 4A, 4A and B, and then 4B.
So here's what we're going to do, I think, with that, Commissioner. We will call the folks that have marked down 4A, and those that have marked down 4A and B. And then, if they want to speak on item B, they can resubmit a card. Because otherwise, I don't know, again, how you, how we could manage it, because we have not had a presentation on 4B.
Okay, except if you wanted to do a presentation in separate. I guess not.
No, yeah, they're...
So on item 4A, the first person will be Zach Channing, followed by Judy Hill, followed by Paula and Felicia. You got it right.
And just to let folks know, we're done taking cards on 4A at this point. Do we have enough to do three minutes for each, or should we? Been advised we have a lot of cards, so we're going to go to two minutes.
Yeah, ready. Good morning, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, Mayor. So I am, my name is Zach Channing. I'm here representing Channing Corporation, along with our partner Malcolm Butters with Butters Construction and Development. And I'm here to talk to you about our exciting project that we've been working on, on Boarden Beach Boulevard, on the northwest side of the Turnpike and Boarden Beach Boulevard. We've been taking this project through with the commerce language. And it's a project that we're really excited for, and we've been working very closely with the neighbors on, to come up with a pretty unique, unique product. And a few things that we've been working with the neighbors on, one is creating a really beautiful landscape buffer along Boarden Beach Boulevard. One of the projects that we built with Channing Corporation, it's called PGA Commons on PGA Boulevard. So a lot of the neighbors came up to us, and they wanted us to kind of mirror what we did there and create sort of like a gateway to Boarden Beach. So we're hoping, this is something that we're designing, and we're hoping that other developers can follow our place and really create something special along Boarden Beach. The other thing that we're doing is putting together some really special uses. And we looked at the commerce language, and we're like, what can we put here that's going to benefit the neighbors? So what we came up with was a product, and instead of calling it commerce, we're creating a project where we're really creating more of a mixed-use project focused on recreational uses. And some of those uses that we're in the middle of talking to, to try to put in our project, is something like indoor pickleball, which is going to have indoor pickleball, and maybe a juice bar. And some, and outside, we'll have some games for like cornhole and stuff for kids to come. Or also, we've been working with the neighbors, they said that we want a microbrewery. So I know we've talked about this in the past, and we've been talking to a few microbreweries about coming into the space. Other stuff like rock climbing and gymnastics. So we're really excited about this project. I know one other thing that the neighbors wanted was a restaurant.
Excuse me, I need to ask you to wrap up.
Okay, it was a restaurant. So we hope that we could work with you all on trying to put a pretty cool, great restaurant for the neighbors and for the community.
Thank you, sir. All right.
So we have Judy Hill, followed by Paula, followed by Drew Martin.
Good morning, Judy Hill. I live on Happy Hollow Road in Delray Beach in the Ag Reserve now for 21 years. I own and operate a small horse farm on 10 acres that will be adjacent to the new State Road 7 Commerce Center that will be touching my property, which is distressing to me to have 38 to 40 acres of concrete, light traffic, tractor-trailer loading right across the street from my horse farm. Horses is a huge industry in Palm Beach County. We live out there and adjacent to farm fields. I've had the pleasure to ride my horse up and down the Ag Reserve for 20 years, and I've really enjoyed that. Traffic is becoming a problem as development in my area. You know, horses need quiet entitlement and space to thrive as do their owners. And to see this in development encroaching on our area, you know, it's frightening, and it's disturbing, and it could potentially put me out of business. So I'm all for preserving the Ag Reserve. Thank you.
So we have Paula, hold on one second. We have Paula, followed by Drew Martin and Linda Smith.
It's Pamela and Felicia. I live at Terrill Delray South off of the 441, but I also bought horses in Delray Equestrian Center. My concern is this agricultural reserve budget that was put out for $150 million, $100 million spent on agriculture, I'm quite concerned because it's, we're, rumors are that we can lose our rights for our horses. Right now, already, on the Olympia Palm Beach that was off the 441, they had 14 barns there. That's 399 stalls. My horses used to be there. It got sold, so I moved to Delray. Now we're having some of the same threats. It is not right that we are being pushed out of something that we enjoy. Wellington is too far away and too crowded and too overdone with people coming in from outside areas for limited amounts. So we are extremely limited on what we can do, where we can ride our horses. We don't even have trails. And I think that because this bond was set up for equalling, as well as open space and agriculture, you need to seriously look at the fact that... agriculture, you need to seriously look at the fact that we don't have equine if you take all this away. And it's very important to all of us, and also to children and youth that we bring out. And it's just good peace of mind. And I really want you to look at that, because I think it's being highly ignored.
Go ahead, Drew.
Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Loxahatchee Group of the Sierra Club, representing Palm Beach Martin and St. Lucie Counties. I think that unfortunately, you know, and I've listened to the Commissioners' questions, and I appreciate that you're asking good questions. You know, the idea of commercial was to support the people who live there. And, you know, what's happened is the commercial there is not supporting the people who live there, it's bringing people in from outside the Agri Reserve. And it's not limited to a few things. Now, this was done very carefully with the comprehensive plan. And so we had a very good planning system. And a planning system, the, you know, not, a lot of this is not owned by the county. It's, but it's agriculture because of the zoning. And what you're seeing now is the attempt by developers to change the zoning. And what they're doing is they're getting rid of all the agriculture that's zoned, and then leaving the county with only what the county owns. But there's a certain, I mean, you have to look at the viability of the crops that are grown out there as being a valuable asset. And Palm Beach County needs to have the three legs of the stool. What is that? That's tourism, agriculture, and development. But right now, the county is getting rid of all the agriculture and getting rid of a lot of the other things that bring people here. Farm-to-table is a tourist benefit. And so I think that we need to slow down this development, and we need to reduce it to just the corridors that were set up for development when you did the comprehensive plan, and not to allow it to keep, you know, migrating into the other areas. We need to preserve the agriculture, and if farmers don't want to farm, then they need to sell to other farmers that will farm. Thank you.
So we have Linda Smith, followed by Sheila Calderon, followed by Gail Ladd.
Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. I want to thank all the Commissioners for your past protections that were outlined in the presentation. We've all heard through the years a lot of pluses and minuses. Just to recap, pluses for leaving the Agri Reserve as it is. It feeds us, it feeds the eastern seaboard, it feeds the nation, it reduces dependence on imported food, maintains current traffic congestion, doesn't add to it, maintains light pollution levels, mitigates flooding, replenishes the aquifer, maintains habitats, reduces heat island effect, maintains public, maintains required public services in the area, such as fire, police, school, public transit, and hospitals, maintains the existing carbon sink, protects the Loxahatchee Refuge from noise, light pollution, air and water pollution. Fewer children and adults with or without disabilities will be able to experience agricultural domestic farm animals or picking their own food, possible expansion of other types of agriculture, such as permaculture, hydroponic agriculture. And the ag conservation and preserved lands has more values because there is now less of it. So that makes it a limited commodity. Now wait, what are the minuses if we develop the Agri Reserve? Less profits for a select few. Intangibles, if you maintain the Agri Reserve as it is, it allows you folks up here in the dais to look good, you've kept your promise to Palm Beach County, and preserves the agricultural reserve. We're kind of like the frog in the water. As the temperature is increasing, you will see by the citizens here that we're kind of fed up with some of the overdevelopment. You will be hearing more and more rural overlay requests by residents to help them to get protected from development. And closing, I volunteer with ERM, and I encourage everyone to do that also. Thank you.
We have Sheila Calderon, followed by Gail Ladd, followed by Andrew Rips.
Good morning, Sheila Calderon, Green Acres, Florida. I first want to once again remind you that as a new resident of Palm Beach County, one of the first votes that I made was for the bond to purchase land for agriculture and preservation. It was passed with an overwhelming vote in favor of the bond. A lot, a lot of people have kept that in mind. Time and again, over the years since, the city Commissioners have been, the county, excuse me, Commissioners have been requested by developers to grant exceptions to the designated agricultural reserve. These exceptions are totally without consideration of how the environment was going to be affected, such as the improvement of flood control, providing wildlife habitat. The concerns also outstanding is that the Agri Reserve is on the eastern border of the National Wildlife Refuge, as Linda just made note to. And that's a big concern. There's a need to maintain the integrity of this agricultural reserve tier, and we should not make any exceptions for development, other than what is currently permitted, which is 40% of any one designated property. Thank you for your time, and I hope attention to the concerns of our environmental community, which I'm a strong part of, as well as respect for the residents that are concerned about their future homes. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Gail Ladd from Jupiter. And I just want to re, just say thank you to all who've been speaking for the agricultural reserve, and to keep it as it is, and less and less of the little cuts that have been coming through development. I was privileged to go out to the Loxahatchee Wildlife Refuge a couple of times in the last couple of weeks. It's just gorgeous. And I just noticed that there was a great big sign, as I'm going down Boynton Beach Boulevard, that said, "Welcome to the Agri Reserve." Well, behind the sign were all these houses. I thought, what are we growing? We're growing more houses than we are growing agriculture. And I really appreciate those who have horses. Horses are gorgeous animals, but they do need quiet. And we're getting so much traffic out there. I really think that we need to remember the original ideas of the Agri Reserve, where to encourage agricultural uses, promote sustainable development. Let's remember that word, sustainable, to limit developmental options, and to enhance open space. So I want you to think very carefully, and I know you've been doing your very best and trying very hard to be studious and learn about this, but I ask you, who's really going to benefit? We need to keep the agricultural reserve as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Andrew Rips, followed by Joe Mulvihill, followed by Neil Ambrosio.
Good, good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, fellow Commissioners and staff. On March 21st, the Tierra del Rey Property Owner Association's active eight board members signed a letter opposing the initiation of the proposed application from Gold Coast. My name is Andrew Rips, resident of Tierra del Rey, 10322 El Perezo Place. Tierra del Rey is a 78 parcel residential, agricultural, and equestrian community located south of Atlantic Avenue and west on 441. Our zoned agriculture and equestrian communities' western land borders the Everglades, and our entry, as a crow flies, is approximately 2,000 feet from the Everglades. This proposed application, if initiated, would bring a potential of 95,000 square feet of use bordering our community entry. If initiated, this additional large trucks, staff, office workers, automobiles would bring additional congestion and be burdensome. U-turns would be needed at Atlantic Avenue near the residential community, the Dakotas, and the residential community south of us, Rio Poco. On any given day in Tierra del Rey, our agriculture and equestrian community, this additional burden in traffic would be an equestrian disaster for my neighbors that are riding their horses. While the Lorraine Road entry is contiguous to the southern portion of the Gold Coast property, in this proposed application, there is no interest or ability to access the southern portion of their property from our Lorraine Road community. This application, if initiated, would also require major roadworks projected to be started off of 441. Tierra del Rey is a community not only committed to the equestrian lifestyle, but the agricultural lifestyle. We thank you for hearing us, and have a great day.
So we have Joe Mulvihill, followed by Neil Ambrosio, followed by Dagmar Bros.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Joe Mulvihill, 9821 Happy Hollow Road. As most of you guys know, I've been coming up here for about 10 years, you know, fighting for the property rights of the landowners in Palm Beach County Agri Reserve. A lot of people come up here, and they're talking about the development of the Agri Reserve, and they think that they're taking away the money, the land, that the money the taxpayers paid, and that's not what's happening. It's just, I have a property that I've been farming, you know, for 30-something years now. I never sold my development rights, and, and we're under contract right now with it. And, and that will alleviate all of the traffic that my farm generates on Happy Hollow Road that, you know, you know, supposedly scare the horses. And I, you know, I probably have 10, 12 semis a day coming in, and probably another dozen or two landscape truck and trailers coming in. They're putting a 300-foot buffer, which will, you know, be a lot of space. But anyway, as I look around the room, I see two people in here that have been in the Agri, in the Agri Reserve longer than me. I've been coming out there since 1974, when my uncle bought Rainbow Farms, and my dad started a farm there. And in '76, he bought his first property. So I've seen all the changes, and, you know, so the commerce is needed to keep up with all the houses that are out there. And Commissioner Baxter, my nursery is at the epicenter of that thrip, and I'm really getting torn up, and I'm going to lose my whole man to Villa Crop this year. So farming's tough.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
So we have Neil Ambrosio, followed by Dagmar Bros, followed by Barbara Roth.
Neil Ambrosio from Canyon Lakes, and on behalf of the Boynton Agri Reserve Communities, which are the nine communities that sit in the Agri Reserve in Boynton. You're going to hear a lot of perspectives today, and they're all valid. I'm going to try to give you a perspective from the residents who have moved into the houses that were grown out there. I moved out there in the mid-2000s, and I wasn't under the impression that there were going to be farms around me. There was stuff contemplated there. And I think if you look at the presentation that staff put together, and you overlay those two maps about 20 to 25 years apart, it's pretty amazing that with rules written back then, we're pretty close to where we should be. My personal opinion, and I think what I hear from our residents, is the Agri Reserve now looks different, depending on where you are in it. You know, Joe O'Donnell's Horse Farm on Atlantic and the Turnpike looks much different than Boynton Beach Boulevard and Acme Dairy, where you have three schools and a park, and some commerce coming in. So yes, we do need things out there. The residents that are out there need some things to support that. They need commerce uses. They need schools. There does need to be differentiation in housing. But those are no more important than, you know, Judy Hill's 10-acre farm that might get disrupted, or Joe's Horse Farm. And you certainly can't tell farmers that they have to farm. I don't know how to farm, I know how to kill stuff, but I don't know how to farm. And if they say farming isn't, you know, reasonable anymore, then you have to listen to them. They have rights, they're landowners, some of them were here before the Ag rules were put in. So the mechanisms that exist in the comp plan, and in the formation of government, and the rules and policies you have, I think have served us pretty well. I think what we need to look at is what other tools are available. Are they community overlays? Are there smaller meetings, or site-specific text amendments, or things that can be done that may make sense for one spot, but not make sense for the other spot? And I think conservation easements, just to finish in five seconds, are a very slippery slope. The county lived up to its, you know, thing to buy 100 million...
Thank you very much, sir.
...worth of land.
Thank you.
The conservation easement was the other part of that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Bad Knees. I'd like to talk from here, if you don't mind. I was here on the 23rd, and I wanted to talk about a couple issues regarding the commerce flu that's going through the process right now. And Commissioner Weiss asked if I would wait, I guess, today? Can I talk about it today? Okay, cool. I also agree, of course, the Agri Reserve needs to be saved, but, you know, I don't want your eyes to glaze over anymore. I want to talk about three things. One is, in the commerce use, it would be really nice if we could lower the FAR, the floor area ratio, instead of being .45, to something like .30 or even lower, realizing these commerce industrial uses are going to be in the Agri Reserve, so it's not as intense as what you would have outside of the Agri Reserve. Number two is, it would be really nice if we could have a maximum square footage per individual user, so that we do deter any regional users from coming into the Agri Reserve. Do you understand what I'm trying to get at? Okay. And number three is, the infrastructure right now in the Agri Reserve sucks. Lion's Road is a nightmare. It's two lanes. You know, we're slowly working on the four lanes. It's just not moving fast enough. You guys are approving everything, you know, Tom, Dick, and Harry's approval, but we just don't have the infrastructure that we need. Boynton Beach Boulevard is Level Service F. Atlantic Avenue is off the charts. We need to get infrastructure in place before we start developing what we're developing that you've already approved. It's always been a shuffle. We make a rule, and then we shuffle to try to accommodate and make more people happy, and we're still shuffling. Let's not shuffle too much. Thank you.
So we have Barbara Roth, followed by Jennifer Morton, followed by Mike Atchinson.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you. Nice to see you again, Barbara Roth, speaking on behalf of Cobra. I appreciate this opportunity, and I will be back this afternoon for the Brookside discussion. Good planning allows people to invest their lives, their fortunes, their futures. Palm Beach County was very wise over 20 years ago in providing a framework that allowed people to do that. I grew up in the city of Miami, downtown Miami, but when it was time for me to move back to Florida 20 years ago, I said, "I'm not going to Miami Dade, and I'm not going to Broward County. I'm going to Palm Beach County, where they've got some good planning going on." And that's how I was able to plan my future, as are the businesses who want to come into the area. And thank you to the Commissioners who have come back for your good planning in the past. About 10 years ago, those signs were put up, almost as an exclamation point about the Agri Reserve. They're very nice signs. Thank you, and thanks to your predecessors. And they say, "Welcome to the Agri Reserve." It lets people know that there is pride in Palm Beach County in this very special area. Cobra is not all Agri Reserve. It's only about 40% of Cobra is Agri Reserve. But that's where all the building and the action is now, and that's why we are focused with your indulgence on that. And I thank you for this opportunity, and I hope to see you at 1 o'clock.
We have Jennifer Morton, followed by Mike Atchinson, followed by Sandra Levin.
Good morning, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning. I have two comments. First, our office has represented many projects in the Agri Reserve. We've always tried to work with the stakeholders, the residents, and we've always tried to come to the table with a quality project that supports the residents in the area. Therefore, I recommend maintaining flexibility to allow for quality projects to come forward and to be developed in collaboration with the residents and the stakeholders. For example, the commerce language was developed. It was able to be vetted by projects that were going through the system. And as a result, additional changes were made to the commerce language. Those changes were allowing the volleyball, the basketball, the fitness uses for the residents that lived in the area. The only other use that the residents had mentioned that I'd like the board to consider is possibly allowing a restaurant use within the commerce category. Secondly, you've heard requests for additional limitations and changes to the Agri Reserve, especially as it relates to commerce. Please note that we spent over a year developing the existing commerce... Please note that we spent over a year developing the existing commerce language. We respectfully request that no further restrictions be placed on the commerce language, and allow the rules to be utilized and be vetted. They were just recently adopted, and any further restrictions to the commerce language will further restrict the type and quality of project that comes before you. There are currently limitations on where commerce can be located, and allow the current rules to apply to the applications. The board always has the right to modify a current application, deny a current application, and we, I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And just to remind people, I made the announcement earlier, maybe some folks didn't hear. So the next item is not a time certain. So just to be clear on that, we'll get to it as quickly as we can. It may be, I'm hopeful, well, we'll see if we'll get it before lunch.
So we have Mike Atchinson, followed by Sandra Levin, followed by Dr. Kerry Snyder.
Good morning, Commissioners. I want to, uh, my name is Mike Atchison. I'm president-elect of the Palm Beach Chapter of Florida Nurseries and Grower Landscape Association. I want to say thank you to Ron Rice for being here today. Your insight is very helpful. And as a neighbor to Joe Mulvahill, I understand the need for property, farmers have their property rights, and some commercial use in the Ag Reserve. That is understandable. The Ag Reserve is a special place. First and foremost, it's important to note that the residents of Palm Beach County voted to protect this area for agriculture use. It's our duty and honor to, it's our duty to honor their wishes and ensure that this land remains protected. And when it comes to, when it comes to agriculture, we know that Palm Beach growers are the best in the world. I may be a little bit biased, but with an estimated $1.3 billion in agricultural sales for 2019, Palm Beach County leads the state of Florida. All counties east of the Mississippi River, and it's one of the 10 largest in the United States. It's not just about bragging rights. Our farmers take great care to use best management practices and ensure long-term health of our land, water, and air. We know that sustainable food production is more critical than ever, and we're committed to doing our part to help our community. The Agricultural Preserve offers a unique opportunity to grow a variety of exotic tropical foliage plants that are impossible to grow in the western areas of our county. The resource is critical to our ability to provide fresh, healthy, and diverse range of tropical plants to the country and really all over the world. And let's not forget its importance to the migrant workforce. These hard-working individuals are a essential part of our industry, and we are committed to providing them with safe and fair working conditions that allow them to support their families and contribute to our economy. Palm Beach is the third in the state of nursery production, and it leads the state in agriculture, wages, and salary with over $316 million directly related to the nursery industry. The Agriculture Reserve is a vital resource we must protect for the sake of our community. We hope that you will join us in our commitment in supporting our local farmers and preserving this valuable asset for generations to come. Thank you for your time.
We have Sandra Levin, followed by Dr. Kerry Snyder.
Good morning. My name is Sandra Levin. I'm a resident of Boca Raton and a Sierra Club member. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. This applies to the Agriculture Reserve, which is a stellar program approved by voters in a bond issue in 1999. The voters approved $150 million to buy land to preserve agriculture, water, and land resources. The Commissioners should protect the integrity of this reserve and honor the wishes of the voters. I urge the county to reject zoning text changes to enable proposed projects, including the Brookside Development. The question of the need for housing versus the need for open space is a false choice, in my opinion. There are other options for housing. Why are changes, my question is, why are changes being considered at this time? The proposal for changes to the zoning in the Agriculture Reserve seems to me to be unnecessary. Developers have been continually pushing for changes to zoning to allow for development in open space, not only in Florida, but in Maryland, where I'm originally from. More and more of our open space is being chopped away until it disappears. It is death of nature and open space by a thousand cuts. Palm Beach County must protect open space from sprawl development. If development is continually allowed to encroach on the agricultural preserve, then the open space is continually diminished, and the idea of the reserve is being defeated. We should not betray the concept that the voters approved, and which is highly successful. We need open space of the Agriculture Reserve to protect our water system, which is under threat across the country. Undeveloped land is needed to drain the water and add to the clean water in the state. Proposed zoning changes to the Agriculture Reserve appear to me to be going backward. In the long run, in fact, the country, the county will save money and valuable resources if they buy more land. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
So we have Dr. Kerry Snyder, followed by Honorable Carol Roberts, followed by Honorable Karen Marcus.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak again. I hate to repeat myself, but I say it every time. I was born and raised in what's now called the Ag Reserve. I was actually born out there. My parents were pioneer farmers on Starkey Road. The Beddners have our farm in the house that my parents built. We grew eggplants and peppers, just like they're still doing today. And this is back in the '40s, '50s, '60s, and '70s that we were doing this. I think everything has to be done to uphold the conservation easements and the designation of these agricultural lands. The soil is special, Commissioner Sax, and our proximity to the Gulf Stream also helps in keeping a very temperate climate. Well, global warming, we won't go into that, but it's a very special area that allows the growth of many types of produce and nursery plants that can only be done this time of year in this country, in this particular area of the county. I think everything should be done to uphold the promise that was made in the late 1990s. I've been so proud of the county for doing this, and encourage the maintenance of this special designation, and to stop the continuous chipping away at the lands that are being farmed. There are farmers that still want to farm, and there's a number of smaller parcels within the Ag Reserve. Well, people, you've heard from them, that have horses and have specialized organic farms and so forth, and these people put their life savings into those lands, and they want to be able to hold on to it and continue to do what they do out there. I want to mention this. There's a parcel on the southwest, oh darn, I'll say it later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I think I know most of you. I don't know some of the new ones, but it's a pleasure to stand here in front of you again. And I want to take this opportunity to remind all of you that in 1989, when we did our comp plan, we looked at the, we tried to look ahead, and I think we did a really good job. It's important to preserve Ag area. The particular Ag area, not the Everglades, but the Ag Reserve, is so important because it's different. The land is different. The soil is different, and you can't really duplicate that anyplace else in Palm Beach County. We, we are, I'll tell you one quick story. When I was campaigning many years ago, I said we were the largest truck farming area in the country, and a lady came up to me, and she said, "We grow food on trucks." And I had to explain that we took that, we took all of that, and we shipped it elsewhere. That's made us a truck farming area. We still do that today, and we do it in areas that are so important to all of the United States, and that is the Ag Preserve area. So I beg of you to remember what we did, and to continue to preserve Palm Beach County in those particularly sensitive areas. I think I have 28 minutes, so it's nice to meet all of you, and to see those that I know again, and to meet the new Commissioners, and I wish you all well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Marcus, former county commissioner and colleague of Commissioner Roberts, and also president of Sustainable Palm Beach County. Nice to see everybody, I hope. Commissioner Roberts and I were co-authors of the bond issue that we put in front of the voters. We had talked about the Ag Reserve for years, trying to figure out a way to save it, for all the reasons that you've all mentioned. Soil type, climate. I remember Adam Putnam, when he was Ag Commissioner, coming down here and talking to the Piro's and saying, "Well, why don't you go over to Amacali or somewhere?" And they're going, "No, you don't understand. This is where we want to be." I think there's huge opportunities for more farming out there. There's a new way of doing, it's called agroforesting, which I'm gonna get to Ron Rice. It's a new way where you grow agriculture and have natural area, and it helps repair the soil. My request today would be, as someone who has lived and breathed and served, protected the Ag Reserve, to ask you to do the same. No more changes. You've provided for every kind of use out there that anybody could possibly want. When we did the Ag Reserve, we did what we called a beauty contest to figure out where the commercial was gonna go. We allowed people to come in, and they picked the two corners with the projects that we thought would serve the Ag Reserve residents the best, and that's how we got our commercial out there. So I would respectfully request that you've done a good job, and I don't think there's any more uses that are needed out there. Just let the farming stay, and really encouraging the farming, the Ag Reserve sign that people have mentioned. We specifically said to the, to the staff, "We need a sign out there, because no one has any idea that this is what this is." And so let's hope that sign is effective, and that we continue to farm and preserve the Ag Reserve. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Lorna Wallach, followed by Jean Yermes, followed by Bob G.
Good morning. My name is Lorna Wallach. I live in the Ag Reserve, and here we go. Well, Commissioners come and go. So over the past several years, we have allowed developers to have their way, instead of taking time to plan for common-sense growth, along with preserving our way of life, which is farming, small business, horses, and wildlife. Why do you think the Waukatahchee and Green Cay Wildlife Preserves are so wildly popular, 12 months of the year, for residents and tourists? It's because humans value open space and wildlife. So now I stand before you and say no to a distribution center being disguised as a mere warehouse. Currently, we can no longer safely drive down 441 Lions Road or Atlantic Avenue. I have been run off the road to avoid head-on collisions, frequently dangerously tailgated, and cursed at by people now taking advantage of our beautiful home. A warehouse is, that does not generate, that will generate 5,000 semi-trailer trips a day. This is a distribution center, and we were promised by the Commissioners back in August 2022 that we would never see one in our home. So today, I do expect all of you to stand by your words, your promises made to all of us. We need to save the Ag Reserve. I appreciate the other Commissioners that were here today. I was part of voting for that bond issue in 1999. I have, I am a retired Palm Beach County employee, a proud one. I've always loved this county, loved what we've done here. Let's not destroy it. Let's take care of it. Thank you.
So we have Jean Yermes, followed by Bob G., followed by Samuel Sintron.
Hi. Yes, good after, well, it's actually the morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Let me first acknowledge each and every one of you, and I want to thank you for your hard work in this difficult planning and zoning, and all these questions that are always put in front of you. We agree that maintaining and creating a rational plan for development fosters the betterment of all our citizens in the county. With that said, the master plan was created with an underlying zoning requirement. Now, once again, you're being asked to alter and change land parcels. The areas in question, they're not in an urban setting, rather, they're zoned very low-density for development. I see no overriding reason for you to alter existing zonings. With all due respect, I see no unnecessary hardship placed on the landowners to develop their properties as in their, as zoning conditions right now. When they purchase these properties, they had the zoning restrictions, so, you know, they were well aware of that. You know, at this point, you know, I'm not gonna stand here and read this, honestly. We need to preserve all the precious Ag land that we had the foresight to set aside in that referendum back in 1999, and that you all touched base on today. I say no to the distribution center. You've got sensitive wildlife out there. There's been so much with equine assisted therapy, et cetera. I mean, we've just had that awful incident out with the school. And I really think we need to consider open spaces and saving this precious land for our children. And I say no to distribution centers, et cetera, and I thank you for your time.
So we have Bob G., followed by Samuel Sintron, followed by John Channing.
Good morning. I'm Bob Gebbia, North Palm Beach, now known as Bob G., and I'm also with Sustainable Palm Beach County. I'd like to bring you all back. There were a lot of good comments made already, but I think you gotta look at the big picture from way back. One of the most incredible things done in this county was the creation of things like the Ag Reserve. It was very well thought of, thought out, and it was very well put together from the very beginning. And I've watched over the last 20 years us whittle away by changing things and changing things, and seeing other things come in there. And now we talk about preserving it. We've already thrown away most of what's there, in my opinion. And so we want, we're talking now about making additional changes. Someone brought up a good comment, stole my line, which is, what we grow out there more than anything now is houses. The density goes up, so on the basis of the density going up, now we can justify trying to build infrastructure, which is gonna take out more land from what we have now, and the other supporting things we need out there, as the densities continue to increase. This was meant to be an agricultural area mainly, and gave opportunities for other development at the time. And you've gotta go back to those times and think about what the vision was, and in your own minds, decide whether or not we have actually sustained that vision, or whether we've continued to diminish it, and now we're pretending to diminish it again. Thank you.
We have Samuel Sintron, followed by John Channing, followed by Jim Knight.
Good afternoon. I need to talk for, in defense of the Ag Reserve. The ecological and economic benefits of the national well of refuge should be a motivating factor in preservation of reserves. It is imperative to understand that the Ag Reserve and that land waiting to be developed, there are many ecological benefits to open space, such as agriculture for suitable food source, and something, and an environment for our national, our natural flora and fauna. We have agriculture, which is essential. We need to sustain that. It's very important, especially when we consider that the west of the U.S. is having a terrible time with the land, farming and water, and we should be considering a backup, just in case there's international conflicts or something, which there may very well be. We have, we have also open space. Many of our wildlifes are dying, butterflies, the bees, which are essential to our livelihoods. Bees, which are essential to our livelihoods. We have to buy them. We have to rent them. The farmers have to rent them to put it in their farms, because they can't find them in their natural spaces. So I think we, you know, everything is recreation here. Do this, commercial. Let's leave something for our pristine areas. So we have, and farming is essential, but we need, somebody talked about more innovative farming techniques. I've read about hemp as a sustainable product for fuel replace, you know, agriculture, fuel, petroleum-based products. So we need, and the toxicity, toxicity is affecting our wildlife.
Appreciate you. Thanks.
So we have John Channing, followed by Jim Knight, followed by Melissa McCune.
I think the, my name is John Channing. How are you? Nice to see everybody, and I hope Commissioner Marino is feeling a little better, but she still sounds sick. I saw, I, but anyway, I'm, the comments that I was gonna make, I think have been made. You have a lot of speakers, so I'm gonna pass, if that's okay.
Thank you very much. So we have Jim Knight, followed by Melissa McCune, followed by Scott Zucker.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, would it be possible to put the 2023 snapshot up here? I have the old one, but I, the new one.
I have the old one, but I -- the new one. My name is Jim Knight. I'm a native of Palm Beach County, born and raised. My kids are born and raised here as well. I've worked in the Ag Reserve for a long time. The reason why I wanted to put the 2023 snapshot up here is that, when you look at that, that says that this has been a huge success. Everybody's saying the Ag Reserve was destroyed and everything else and so forth. We're down to roughly 3% of the remaining lands in the Ag Reserve. So far, 13,358 have been preserved, which is 60%, right on target, so it's been a huge success out there. I think some of the changes that have recently taken place for essential housing and for commerce have been good for the area and good for the residents, as well as the businesses that are out there. We still have an ongoing issue. Every day, I get a call from another nursery or landscape business that is trying to find a place to call home. It's very limited where those locations are. Many of them are having to travel up far, as far north as Southern Boulevard, to service the residents of the Agricultural Reserve. I just wanted to say again, I think it's been a big success, and I would appreciate your continued work on the Ag Reserve, and thank staff for all their work on this presentation.
So we have Melissa McCune, followed by Scott Zucker, followed by Dr. Lori Vinicor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melissa McCune, born and raised in Delray Beach, currently live in Deerfield. I was going to say we could leave that snapshot up there, because it's something that I wanted to speak to as well, but I just wanted to mention, back on March 24, 2015, we had a similar all-day Ag Reserve workshop, which was after a year of roundtable discussions that I proudly contributed in. Back at that time, I believe it was 13% of the remaining lands, and we met with other private property owners of the Ag Reserve and approached the commission to let them know that, hey, you know, we would like to see, you know, mainly, we were left out of the plan. We had a lot of parcels along main corridors that had no opportunities to join the community that was now there, because the landscape had drastically changed since I grew up out there. You know, houses were everywhere, were there, are there, and other services were needed, and the commission understood that and worked with our pact, which is force to farm. I wanted to just mention kind of my personal story, obviously, in a nutshell, 40 seconds. My family-owned property just next to the Delray Marketplace, purchased in 1976. I inherited that when my father passed away, when I was 10, right around when the Ag Reserve was created. I didn't know how the Ag Reserve would impact me, but it stripped the commercial rights that were there, that we fought for and were able to get back, back in 2015, and I'm proud to see the development starting to take place on that property to be a microhospital. Thank you, to serve the community.
So we have Scott Zucker, followed by Dr. Lori Vinicor, followed by Jordan Snyder, followed by Lisa Interlandi. Then that would be the last card.
Okay, well, I made it back from feeding the meter. Okay, so I'm Scott Zucker, president of Audubon Everglades. The Ag Reserve was wisely created to enhance agriculture, our environmental resources, and open spaces. The area acts as an important buffer, protecting Palm Beach County's largest and most important contiguous natural area and wildlife sanctuary, the 147,000-acre Locksatchie National Wildlife Refuge. Much like many of the properties in Florida's Lauded Rural and Family Lands Protection Program, the Ag Reserve property also serves as a wildlife corridor, a buffer zone between urban areas and protected land, and supports pollinators and greater biodiversity. While most of the changes in the comprehensive plan to the Ag Reserve have resulted in greater development, however, I think, as the board knows, America has witnessed drastic declines in birds, mammals, and pollinators, approximately 30 to 40%, according to research. The Palm Beach County Christmas Bird Count, which I participated in for the last 10 years, has seen a steady decline in bird totals over that time. The retention of undeveloped land as part of the Ag Reserve is important for our Palm Beach County wildlife and habitat conservation efforts. When I go to see birds at the refuge, I also bird the Bedner Farm Fields along Lee Road Refuge entrance. Recently, just two weeks ago, I saw 14 different species of birds foraging in the farm fields during the 15 minutes I spent walking along the farm field road. Including in that 15 minutes were two resplendent painted buntings. This is an opportunity for the board to speak for birds, wildlife, and biodiversity. It is important that the board does everything in its power to preserve the Agricultural Reserve from further degradation by allowing for further development. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mayor Weiss, Vice Mayor Sacks, and Commissioners. I'm Lori Vinicor, president of the Alliance of Delray Residential Associations, and I am a farmer in the Agricultural Reserve. I live at 10626 Lorena Road in Tierra del Rey, which is an agricultural enclave established in 1977, very similar to Biltmore Acres that you've all been speaking about. Even, in fact, Fernley Road and Colbright Road are very similar to Lorena Road and El Perizo Place. We have large acreage residential agricultural parcels. I grow exotic fruits, and I have horses, and I was a member on the original Agricultural Reserve Roundtable about seven years ago. There were 19 of us on that roundtable, and there were many changes that took place at that time, after attempting to clear up unintended consequences that came about in the Agricultural Reserve and to help the farmer. So this past year, two significant changes were made, and that was the additional essential housing and the commerce land use. And that does not extend south of Rio Grande Avenue, because we squared off that corner of Atlantic and 441. Staff is doing a terrific job working on bringing alternative uses to some of the lands in the Agricultural Reserve. Please keep in mind three issues. The limit development intensity and density, of course, we all know, the infrastructure can't come soon enough, and we try to avoid socioagricultural injustice to not have any further commerce south of Atlantic Avenue, as my president was, is quite passionate about the issue, because it has become a residential corridor south of Atlantic Avenue. And just to talk about microclimate, come to my farm and you will see sophisticated irrigation and exotic fruits you've never seen, things that couldn't be, couldn't be grown above Marathon Key. They can be grown down the Ag Reserve.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Jordan Snyder, and I'm attorney for Robert Enhart, C.L.P.A., representing 1,000 friends of Florida and the Sierra Club Locksahatchee Group. The Ag Reserve was established to enhance agricultural activity, environmental and water resources, and open space. Our firm has been a part of this discussion with the county since 2015, and our firm has kept the same view since that time period, which is, keep the Ag Reserve, the Ag Reserve. And yet, these principles that the reserve was established on have been chipped away over time, from allowing light industrial zoning, building congregate living facilities, large development of single-family homes that are immediately adjacent to these farms. If the commission approves more development, it'll further undermine the intent and character of the Ag Reserve and set further damaging precedent. Promises were made to preserve these lands using taxpayer money, and this has not been an efficient or sustainable use of those monies. Adding commercial and residential uses to enhance, to enhance the benefit of the Ag Reserve has not been accomplished so far. It's not the residential preserve, it's not the commercial preserve or the light industrial reserve, it's the Ag Reserve. It was established to promote agriculture, environment, the environment, and open spaces, and the county's focus should be on promoting that. Thank you.
Hey there. Lisa Interlandi, I'm the executive director of Everglades Law Center. This takes two seconds, and just, Everglades Law Center is a not-for-profit law firm. We work in the public interest, we're attorneys, we work in the public interest for the environment here in Palm Beach County and throughout South Florida. So that's kind of what we do. I've been around since 2000, working for Everglades Law Center. So one of my first things I started working on here was the Ag Reserve. And my first meeting at Palm Beach County was when they were adopting the Ag Reserve master plan, and it was such an ambitious and actually very successful plan. You know, it's been so successful as it was originally envisioned. Unfortunately, what we have seen since then is, I mean, we saw the list, I saw the list of amendments, all the changes that have been, that have occurred since the plan was adopted. I did not see any on that list, and maybe anyone could correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't see any amendments on that list that were adopted to promote a further agriculture. Not one of those amendments was for that. Every single one of those amendments that you guys heard described earlier and changes to the plan was to facilitate more growth and development in there. And unfortunately, what, you've heard a lot about the conflicts that have arisen, the conflicts between horse farms and nurseries and people and spraying and farms and restaurants. There's a lot of conflicts, but we have to always go back to the purpose for which the Ag Reserve was established. It wasn't established to be a place where it's an urban center. It was established to protect agriculture. So, you know, I urge you to do that and to move forward with policies that help to preserve that. Just really quick, there's only 3% remaining? That's only true unless you guys change the plan. If you guys change the plan and allow more development, that's not true. It will never end. The development will continue throughout. And I just wanted to say, not just about the Ag Reserve, but about conservation easements in general. That is one of the issues that Everglades Law Center finds the most critical in this county, is preserving our conservation lands forever. It's not just for us, it's for our kids, our kids' kids.
Thank you very much.
For the next 400 years, forever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have finished the cards. Thank you. Okay, we will be in recess till 1:15.